Alright, so this Livingston City Commission meeting is called to order. Roll call please.
Chair Nees.
Here.
Vice Chair Kale.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman.
Roger.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Fraser.
Commissioner Lyons.
Fraser.
Wonderful. First on the agenda is general public comment. So this is for items not on the agenda. If you have comment that you want to give for something on the agenda, you'll just wait till we get to that agenda item. So individuals are reminded that public comments should be limited to items of which a city commission has supervision, controls jurisdiction, or advisory power. We'll start within the room, then we'll go online. So if there's anybody in the room that wants to give general public comment, please come up to the podium and start with your address, and then just make sure you sign in at some point.
Can I give a general public question?
Yeah, if you come to the podium, and sometimes we answer questions, and sometimes we wait until the comments at the very end of the meeting.
I'm not sure I'm in the right place. There's an informational meeting for the hour work being done between Main and Second Street. Is this?
That is not this meeting.
Shannon Holmes is doing it.
He is at the other meeting, and
I believe it's at the library, isn't it?
I believe so. I should read those letters more carefully. It's at the library.
Do you know where the library is?
I do indeed.
Wonderful.
Great to see you guys tonight. Carry on.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here with general public comment? Okay, I'm gonna look online. Anybody online want to give public comment? I don't see anyone, so. Do you see this connecting to audio?
Yeah, she's been connecting for a minute.
Okay, so public comment is closed. Next on the agenda are consent items. We have two consent items tonight. Is there anything commissioners want to hold? Nothing? Does somebody want to make a motion for consent items A and B?
I'll make a motion to approve consent items A and B.
A second.
Motion by Lyons and a second by Kale. Roll call please.
Chair Nees.
For.
Vice Chair Kale.
For Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion passes. No proclamations tonight, and there are two scheduled public comments. First up is Jim Burke presents the 2023 zoning commission annual report. No commissioners, we have a form that they can't hand out before the meeting. Mr. Gager.
Good evening, and I will point out actually before Mr. Burke begins his wrap-up, the document that was included in the packet actually was the prior year's annual report, and so we have an updated copy, and we will include this with the minutes, but six is here, and able to operate any answers to questions you may have that we were considering, Mr. Burke.
Thank you.
Thanks, Grant. I'm Chair of Members and Commissioners. Nice to be here. Good to see you. Again, it's been a while. Alright, my name is Jim Burke. I'm in town on South Fifth Street. I'm Chair of the City Zoning Commission. And we have provided you with our annual report, which is you can read it at your leisure, I guess. I'd like to let you go a little bit over some highlights and bring up a couple of issues that I have. And we'll go from there. So if you look at the report, we've got ten zoning map amendments that we passed in our work this past year, and one zoning text amendment. And in looking back at the previous year, that those numbers fit for them. So the previous year, we spent most of our time working on text amendments and had very few map amendments, and then this past year, in 2022, we had ten projects that came up that we reviewed and then forwarded to you. And I think that says a lot in terms of what's going on in your community, in terms of the the real estate market and the pressures that we're under. So that's where we're at. I thought we had a pretty good year. One real issue I would like to bring up, we had four of our meetings canceled by city staff. And it was always this kind of last minute. Most of those happened prior to Grant and Jennifer coming on board, but this month's meeting was canceled too. My understanding of our relationship is that we work for the city commission, you set policy, we're concerned too, and we kind of work out what our direction should be, and then the city staff is there to provide us with technical expertise, and then whenever there's a text or a map amendment, they process that material and send it to us for consideration. So in the past, we've always set our own agendas and our own priorities, and then there was communication. So that their material, the raw material, both got on the agenda. So that's that's what I wanted to clarify tonight. And the big issue there is with these four meetings that we missed. Every time we had as our priority, working on the gateway overlay zone amendment, and that's that's a topic that has been a priority for at least ten years that I know of. The previous year, we got through everything else that was on our list, and that rose to the top, but then now we've been stymied for four months for really putting in the time and work on that. So we're under real estate pressure in this town. We could easily have some big projects proposed, and we would be behind the eight ball. So we really need to to work on this, prioritize this, and get it in writing. So anyhow, maybe there's a discussion about that or just some clarification about, you know, how we should proceed.
Yeah, we'll wait till you're done, and then I'll address your concerns.
Yeah, um, so then beyond that, and just in terms of this upcoming year, in terms of what we see coming down the pike, and this in terms of our priorities, Grant has talked to us about working through the growth policy and sort of formalizing that process such that the growth policy recommendations then become coordinated and consistent with the zoning process. So that's a big chunk of work that we're looking forward to working on. And part of that, of course, is housing. It seems the housing is, everyone knows, it's kind of top of the list in terms of you know, problems in this community, and it never seems to be addressed efficiently such that we can we can provide affordable housing. And then finally, I want to bring up an idea that I've been thinking about a lot, and that is to organize the redesigned Park Street. Park Street, if you visualize, it comes all the way from the KPRC Bridge. Well, beyond that, past the hospital to town, and then out past the underpass, the overpass. And we can visualize what that looks like. It's a main artery in town. So it's absolutely crucial for transportation, for commerce, for people getting to where they want to go, and it's also a big bottleneck. Right? We have one, because of our geography, we have one street going through to town, and it's a problem. So what do we do about that? So there's probably still work that could be done in terms of some alternate street that could be worked on, but then beyond that, it really seems to me that we could do a lot for the image of this town, the beautification of this town, the attractiveness of this town, if we could get together and and improve that whole section of town. And a lot of that would include streets and gutters, pocket parks, and signage. And, you know, some access from various businesses and that. And that's much bigger than zoning. But it just seems to me, because I've been thinking about it, it's a project the city really needs to take on, you know, take the city working on the public works, it would take the railroad being involved, it would take the Montana DOT involved. It's a big project, probably would be multi-year, but I want to throw that out to your consideration. If it could be prioritized, then look together, a working group to proceed on that, but it would do wonders for the way this this town looks. So I think that's that's it for big picture things. I'll just leave it at that. If you have any discussion about what I brought up.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Jim. We can't really have a discussion since it's not on the agenda for us to discuss, but I have five things that you said flagged that I can ask Mr. Gager to respond to, and if you can't respond to all of them today, I can do my best to share my perspective, or we can just put a pin in it and bring us to another meeting also, but does that make sense that
Yeah.
it's kind of a formality where the commission can't discuss things unless it's on the agenda, but then after we cover those things, that the commission wants to ask questions or get clarification, I think that would be great. Does that sound okay, commissioners? Okay. So the first thing, how about I go through my list, and then you can find us leaving? So the first thing is, do you want to address why you canceled, or why not you, why we are all okay canceling some of the board meetings early this year? I want to address why, why we're doing that as a city.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And please know that the city was not targeting either the work of the zoning commission and certainly not any any specific item of work like the gateway overlays on. The gateway overlay zone, as we know, is discussed in the growth policy to some length, as are a number of other very important zoning items. And so I've mentioned in past meetings, then I'll reiterate that again, that this meeting, that the next meeting on February seventh, I'm going to present a plan to implement the growth policy. And so we did cancel a number of advisory board and committee meetings this month to both give our staff a little bit of time to bring things together as far as implementing, give the community a little bit of a cohesive launch on implementing the growth policy and have, you know, our kickoff meeting here with the commission and then follow things down to the advisory boards. And then also, certainly because there are so many items in the growth policy that relate to zoning, it seems like a nice gesture to to give the committee a month off to start the year, because I think 2023 is going to be a very big year in the city of Livingston as we implement the policy. So that's that is why this month we had a number of board committee meetings canceled. I can't necessarily speak to the motivation before I got here.
Right. I would invite you to share a little bit too about and I want to be clear that this is not, you know, a Mr. Gager decision, that this is, you know, during the interview process and over the last couple of years, this commission has made it very clear what our priorities are, and it's obviously implementing the growth policy is something that I've heard the commission say over and over. So that's really a commission-led priority, and so, you know, whoever's sitting in that chair happens to Mr. Gager, we expect him to implement it. So that's where that direction is coming from, but this this idea of how agendas are set, and can you share a little bit about how we're going to be improving process to sort of implement the commissions well through agendas?
Yeah, and we've been working on that internally, and we're taking a little breather in January. My next several weeks will be reaching out to all of the advisory board and committee chairs, and, you know, quite honestly, the the process that Mr. Berg outlined matches very closely with the process that that we are moving forward with, where, you know, each meeting will have a slate of old business that is unfinished from prior meetings and a slate of new business, and the new business slate, in part, especially in the next several months, will be driven by the growth policy implementation work, and and then also we fully expect that other items that will be brought forward through that process, whether from the the community or from the advisory boards, will also make that on that new business agenda. And so we do have, that said, we do have a number of items that we're planning for each of the next several months, and so it will be a relatively full slate, but that said, we do want to keep the meetings manageable and accessible to community members, and so we're not going to just pack the agenda with twenty items and six-hour meetings. That doesn't seem productive. And and I will say, it is is our goal, and we started communicating to all of our advisory board and committee members that that those meetings will in this room in a manner very similar to this meeting, and so there will be both an in-person hybrid option. We think the in-person option is is pretty important to facilitate conversation and consideration of some larger issues that will come up, and and then similarly on kind of a process side, we will have staff that's creating the agenda in the packet. It'll all be posted on our on our website on on the meeting information page, just as they are for the city commission, and and then similarly, you know, when the meeting's done, the the minutes and the recording will also be posted up on the website. So those those advisory board and committee meetings will have the same look and feel as a city commission meeting, starting in February.
It's great. I think the public will really like that. And then just for clarity, it's my understanding too that you're sort of playing like calendar or agenda Tetris, understanding like all the different things coming before our boards and lining it up in a way that it makes sense as things need to flow to the commission, so we also won't have like twelve-hour meetings. Right? So I mean, that's so when folks are wondering how things are put on their agendas, it's all related to all the boards and also the commission and everywhere else where decisions are made.
Exactly. We are trying to to schedule things in a manner that makes sense, you know, and you know, just as A comes before B and C in the alphabet, we have certain work items that need to precede other work items, and so we will be scheduling it that way, and and I will say the the third week of of every month is a busy one, because that's what a lot of our advisory board and committee meetings are, and and certainly Wednesday, the third Wednesday of the month is is a busy one. I think I've got four straight meetings on those days, and so we may may toggle some of those schedules a little bit just to facilitate community involvement and participation with advisory board and committee process.
Yeah, let us know if you need to bring something for the commission, if there's bylaws or something that needs to be fixed. Okay. So hopefully that helps clarify a little bit of like what the
Actually not.
Oh, it doesn't?
My point would be that always in the past, we set the agenda in consultation with the staff if they had projects that they were bringing to the table. And that's that's what is not working.
So it sounds like maybe if you're going to meet with board chairs, this is something that you guys can take and see if you can have a little bit more of a conversation about what needs to be ironed out, and then if it needs to come back through the commission, you can let us know.
Absolutely.
Because it might be a communication, a way to improve communication. That sounds good. Does that work? Can you be able to set up?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
There's probably easy tips.
Great, that'd be great. I'd love it if you two could get together, and then we can be brought in the loop. Okay, okay. And then the next thing I have on the list is Gateway Overlay Zone, you already mentioned, that's going to be coming up. We should expect to see that with the rollout of the growth policy. And you already talked about growth policy. That's the first meeting in February. So we're going to do a big you'll do like the rollout of a commission meeting, so everybody that wants to see what that looks like should tune in or watch the replay.
Absolutely.
And then did you want to address Park Street at all? I think Jim covered it pretty well, talking about all the jurisdictions, and I know that's an important role that you play as city manager is because there's so many jurisdictions and there've been parts to a project like Park Street. Is there anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, you know, I would offer that perhaps this consideration of Park Street is is kind of not for for us to work this new process with with zoning, because there are, you know, and I'm attended the last zoning meeting in December, yeah, December, when they kind of talked about the the issue very briefly there, and it, as as Mr. Burke pointed out, is a multifaceted project that involves public works and and potentially a an overlay district. I the the growth policy itself speaks to potential creation of design overlay districts, which seems to be a little bit hitting that some of the the comments that were made there, and so it is something that's contemplated within the growth policy, at least the design overlay district, and there's some other elements that we spoke to that are contemplated as well, and I won't go into too much detail here. Save that for another meeting. But but I think this is a an example of a good opportunity for community involvement at the zoning level, as as we talk about these designer overlay districts, because they they've come up in a number of conversations that we've all heard of in community meetings, so yeah, like I said, 2023 will be an exciting time to be on the City of Livingston zoning commission.
Yeah. Okay, is there any other things you want to address that?
Other, there was there was a lot rolled in there as far as projects, and I just to say, yes, I am aware of the the eastern entrance to town, and and it is an area that I look forward to working on in the coming years.
Okay, so commissioners, I want to give you a chance to, if you have questions for Jim, knowing that we can't discuss, but we can
Your job. You did a lot. Really happy.
I, yeah, go ahead.
I'll just say Mr. Gager is suggesting that that 2023 might be a busy year on the zoning commission, and I'm glad to hear that relative alignment of what you're coming to independently and what how Mr. Gager wants to implement the policy direction from the commission. I think there's there's really close alignment there, and to get our zoning regulations in line with the growth policy is going to take a lot of work, and I just preemptively appreciate that work from from you and the zoning commission, so.
The city manager warned us at the last meeting that was coming, and actually, there was a gentleman.
I, I, I mean, that's that's the sentiment I'm getting from from what you shared with us.
Yeah, no, it's it's just this frustration I have that we lost four months of work on on a critical issue. We can't always wait for the ordinances to be perfect and and then apply them to what's coming down the road, because stuff is coming down the road, right?
Yeah.
And this is something I feel we need to get out of in front of.
I appreciate that. Appreciate you sharing that with us, and hopefully we can get on a cadence and a schedule that works well for everyone.
Okay. Jim, I want to say that I really appreciate the work that you all have done on the zoning commission. I know you and I started together back when it was a joint board, and I really appreciate that you stuck around during that very tumultuous transition, and that you took your expertise over the zoning commission. I mean, this list is not insignificant. The amount of work that you've done for us, bringing us recommendations and having difficult conversations before it even came to us. So I want to thank you personally for that, and for you as a person that's willing to stay in that chair role. I know it's a difficult, I'm I'm sure it's a difficult board. And also, I think we all feel similarly, probably, that the past four months have been, well, really the past six or seven months have been extremely challenging in Livingston, and you know, we're all way beyond capacity and understaffed without a planner and without, you know, with without key figures in the executive branch of government with seats unfilled or people working beyond capacity, things just weren't getting done because we didn't have enough people. And so I want to acknowledge that that was really hard on our boards too. And I'm sorry that it was so hard, and thank you for sticking through it, and I think that 2023 is going to be really different. Please come to the next meeting. Can't wait to see what Mr. Gager is going to put in the packet. Please come and join us. And thank you so much. Does anybody else have anything they want to say to?
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
I have another meeting.
What's that?
Another meeting to go.
Another meeting. Yeah, well, thank you for being here. Okay. Next on the agenda is Laurel Desnick presents the 2023 City Tree Board Annual Report. Mr. Gager.
Thank you.
Well, that, well, Mr. Gager started.
Yeah, I was going to say, good evening, without any further ado.
Thanks for the invitation. I think you have my annual report or the report from the committee in your packets. I think the tree board, it sounds so simple, but in fact, you know, coming off of what was just said, it represents safety, it represents health, it represents the beauty of our community. It also is coming directly up against the built environment, which is changing rapidly. The natural environment is changing rapidly. And we are trying very hard to juggle all of this and remain relevant, you know, in the same way, how do we interface with you? How do we interface with zoning and with planning and with ongoing decisions being made at the city? There's a lot of work being done. A lot of it honestly has nothing to do with the tree board, even though it's all about trees. So I think that's one issue. I think you know, there was a lot of turnover this year. We've really discussed a lot just what our expertise, I mean, citizen boards are great, and they need to be knowledgeable and current and reliable, and so those are things that we are all working on. I think this public works is doing something similar. Now that they have an arborist, that's great. That will be helpful in the coming year. The tree inventory was completed for this side of town. We have a lot of trees, a lot of them need help. They're quite aged. A lot of new trees are being planted. That's the easy part. I think we really need a very, very good plan on maintenance. It's expensive. Water is expensive. Arbors are expensive. Tree services are expensive. There's a lot of movement in and out of town. There's a lot of people that don't understand that we really live in a semi-arid climate, and that shade trees on the boulevards may not be our best vision for Livingston in the coming years with the environmental changes and things that we face. Those are all things to be discussed in the coming year. I think the an education program, and I don't know where that fits, that's a little bit of a different tack that the tree board would like to take, because if we're going to be on the honor system for people to care for their own trees, how do they do that? I think a lot of people, you know, we know from our data of county, almost twenty percent of people have lived here less than five years, and almost half are considered and so that's just a huge amount of turnover, and the trees are there for a hundred years, and so every new chain needs to be reeducated.
Is that a half of the twenty percent or a half of everyone?
That is a half of everyone. Yeah, it was forty-seven percent countywide, which included the city. That was our Caspo done in the spring of this year. Yeah. So it's real. We need to really focus on education, and we can talk in the future about how to do that. I think the board is very interested in jumping in on that. There is talk of how we pay for all of this. It's expensive, and, you know, reference to the growth policy, there's a lot of similar talk. There's a lot of overlap and convergence of interests, and at the same time, saving water, especially in non-photable settings, but increasing vegetation, green space, and I think what's not here, but it has been present on our annual report for several years, is the eighty-nine, the Park Street. Very key for safety. We have a lot of uncontrolled intersections. It's a route to school. It's a route for many people from the grocery store. We have a large group that doesn't have transportation in this community. It's a walking route. It's a bicycle route, and as we know, vegetation helps with all of that. Safety slows people down. Makes for cleaner air, makes for more quiet, and that's going to be a large collaboration that we absolutely want to be in on, but we're looking forward to your plan because we haven't really had by in on that for several years. That's it.
Questions? I want to slide a couple. Well, do you have anything that you want to respond to first, just like?
No, I won't.
Okay. Um, I I'm hoping that maybe like this idea of a maintenance plan and education program and paying for the work or conversations you as our tree board chair, that's the board I'm on, can have with Mr. Gager when you have your chair meetings and maybe figure out what that might look like, and then you know, you could bring that information back to the tree board. Does that does that work for you to to have that conversation outside of a meeting?
What you're going to go about that, and whose role is it?
Yeah, I mean, and everything, you know, I just want to underline everything you said, that I've been hearing that for the past year at the tree board, so I think that'll be great to figure out if there's a path forward and you know, how it fits with the bylaws and all of that. Do you folks have any questions for?
Good report, Laurel. Thank you.
You're welcome. I think just to just to recap, it's I hear this a lot from our board members, and that maybe where there's turnover, it's hard to feel feel relevant because the sort of the train moves and we hear about it. Because the sort of the train moves and we hear about it secondhand, we read it in the newspaper, we get it through the grapevine. And so some of that is inevitable. There are many players, but if there's a way to kind of just, you know, how does that process work similar to what zoning was saying? You know, are we just a reflection of the city manager? Are we a reflection of the citizenry or? Anyways, those are the bigger questions and would be great to address.
You know, these are, I think these are great questions and they're themes I know I've been hearing for four years and I think, you know, there, we're in a time of transition, obviously, in the city of Livingston and I think, you know, Mr. Gaiger has a lot of experience with working with boards and he has a lot of experience with local government. And so I think he's going to be bringing some, you know, new solutions and new ways to think about communication that might be able to improve these processes. So it's knowing that it's not going to be, so like, it's not going to be, everything's different in the next meeting and all problems are gone. It's going to be a process where we work on improving communication, but we have this commitment to, to bring new ideas and have hard conversations about what's not working and what we can do better. So maybe we'll start with you two and then you can, I'll be at the board meeting. So you and I will talk. Perfect hour. Do you have anything you want to add about trees or?
No, you know, I, having said in at least one tree board meeting in my time here, you know, there certainly are thoughtful conversations that are happening. And I think the, this city and the community has some great resources and passionate people on the tree board. So we would like to harness that moving forward, but I do sense a level of frustration. And so I'm, I'm happy to work with you to alleviate some of that and, and find some solutions that, that will benefit us all.
And I hope also that you can make it to the next meeting because I'm sure the growth policy will be touching on all the boards. So.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah.
When I first joined the commission, thousand years ago, twelve years ago, I was on the tree board. And there's all, what, what is Livingston about? The trees, I mean, how bushes and I mean, it's such a vast thing, but it's so much a part of our personality. And I always thought that we needed joint conversation, you know, you could, you can come up with anything with money and factors and probably wanted to look. So it's a very broad thing. And to find people that are interested in and working in it and come up with a plan is so important. But it's a huge area. It's Livingston. So I, I found it very frustrating trying to solve problems. There's a lot of, lot of things to consider, but it all falls under the same umbrella. So I think maybe we have to take a little different approach to it. And just don't rely on a tree board, but I think we have to have a lot of expertise coming around it. So I, I thank you for joining us.
No. Great. Thank you for that. Right. Anything else? Moving right along. So next on the agenda are resolutions. First up, resolution number five zero seven nine, resolution relating to special improvement district funds series two thousand twenty-three and the original aggregate principal amount not to exceed one million five hundred five thousand dollars. Authorizing the issuance and calling for the sale and delegating to a pricing committee the authority to set the terms thereof within the parameters set forth in this resolution. Mr. Gaiger.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Noots. The item before you folks now is a continuation of a conversation that started the night that I was hired. And it is not the last step, but it is almost the last step in the, in the Green Acres pro, uh, project. And so a, as you recall, the special improvement district is to extend wastewater collection services out to Green Acres and Montag subdivisions. And we, the city is at the point where the next meeting will come before you the request to approve a construction contract. And now that we have those numbers and some of that's been finalized, we would like to, as we lead up to awarding the construction contract, we would like to take the next step working with our, our bankers at DAD to actually price the debt and begin the, the sale process. And so that is the, the resolution before you folks and I would stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any clarifying questions? See none. I don't either. So it's time for a motion on resolution number five zero seven nine. I move for resolution five zero seven nine and authorize this chair to sign the resolution.
Well, second.
Motion by Kale and a second by Schwartz. And now it opens a public comment. We'll start in the room and then we'll move online. So is there anyone that wants to give public comment on resolution five zero seven nine? In the room? Nope. All of them online? Anybody online? You don't see anyone online? Wants to give a comment? So tell a comment for resolution five zero seven nine is closed. Commission discussion. Anyone, commissioners?
Pretty straightforward to me, quite frankly, yeah.
Seems like standard process. All right, no discussion. Ready for, about we have a motion by Kale and a second by Schwartz. We'll talk, please.
For, please your kale for commission improvement.
Or. Or. Or.
Next on the agenda is resolution five zero eight zero. A resolution of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana, authorizing the city manager to sign the CLG program grant application with the Montana State Historic Preservation Office for CLG grant period April first, two thousand twenty-three through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Gaiger.
Thank you, Chair Noots. And so this grant program is a program that the city of Livingston has participated in in years past. And so this is another opportunity for the, the city to continue. We have had a, a downtown inventory, building inventory project that has been ongoing. And for calendar twenty-three, that is the expected use of those funds is to continue the downtown building for it. And so we meet the requirements for the state grant. And so forty was for us to pursue this grant as we've done in the past.
Any clarifying questions, Mr., or excuse me, Commissioner Lyons?
Will you, what is the? I can imagine some purposes of the inventory, but can you describe to us how that inventory of downtown buildings will be used? Yes, I can. And actually, I think this would be a fantastic opportunity to welcome our new planning director, Jennifer Seaver, sent to the conversation. Jen, would you mind? I just anywhere if I can go to him, but the white part is the microphone.
Um, yeah, do you want me to explain to you just kind of how, what the purpose of the inventory is?
Yes, please.
Okay, so this is for the historic district, the downtown historic district and the district, I think, was the, the survey that was done to get that historic district designated and onto the national register along with the other couple of historic districts in Livingston. The survey was done in nineteen seventy-nine. It hasn't been updated since nineteen seventy-nine except for the work that was started, I think, three or four years ago through these CLG, the certified local government funds through SHIPA. State Historic Preservation Office. And the reason that's important is, as I understand it, because I spoke to Shiva about this. We don't have any updates. We have buildings that have been, that were contributing structures that have been torn down. So they're no longer there. We have buildings that were not historic in nineteen seventy-nine, but that now are. Pretty much building that were nineteen sixty-three, I think now qualifies. So we have a lot of structures. So part of this is for the individual buildings. Just to get sort of the background, historical background. But part of this also is going to be trying to get that information updated. It may even change the district boundaries once we determine like city hall, city hall renovations. Like they might have even torn down the building that was there before. That was originally in the historic district. It no longer is. But my understanding from the state is every time we change our historic district, they haven't been notified necessarily. So, and it's, it's not necess, it's, this is something that other areas of Kellina, she, she told me, they, they do this sort of on an ongoing basis as buildings change. And they would just like to get a good baseline of the commercial structures in the downtown historic district. So that's really what this is. It's just continuing efforts that have already been done. I think they got seven or eight buildings done with the twenty thousand or so dollars between twenty sixteen and nineteen or twenty maybe. And we just want to continue that.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You still have a board? Do you have any other questions?
No.
Any other commissioners? Okay, so how about a motion on resolution five zero eight zero?
I move to, making sure I'm on the right page here. I move to support the city of Livingston's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four CLG program grant application.
Second, motion by Lyons and second by Kale. Public comment. We'll start in the room. Anyone? No one in the room? I'm seeing comment. We'll look online. Anybody online want to give comment on resolution fifty eighty?
Chair Noots.
We do. Yeah, Laurel, do you mind just coming over so you're a little bit closer to that?
I remember very well when it was done the first time around. And it was a very big deal for Livingston. The buildings were all updated. There were color palette was chosen, the sods were improved and repaired and painted and it created such a sense of pride in the community. And there are just a few shreds of it left and I'm very happy to hear that that might be coming again.
Thank you. Anyone else in person or online? I don't see any. So public comment for resolution five zero eight zero is closed. Commission discussion.
I'm excited to hear what, do that happen, Laurel. I'm glad. That was a nice reminder since you were here when it happened the first go around. So that's been, that's exciting to think about.
Thanks. Other commissioners? No, you're good.
Have you been a member of the Historic Preservation Board and part of the CLG was going on then? Next to see it continuing and it's very important to our town.
Thanks, Commissioner Schwartz. I was waiting for you to chime in as our historic, our historic commission expert, our historic, the expert, the commissioner that works on all the historic buildings in town. I'm excited. I think this is great and I think it's fun to see what these department heads are bringing to us. So thanks, Jen. For bringing this to us, it's nice to see what Livingston can do when we're at capacity. And I think folks are going to be really into this and I'm hoping that when, you know, should this vote go through and we get you know, an assessment of our downtown, I hope that you will come back and tell us what interesting things you learned. That would be a lot of fun to hear at a meeting, I think. So, anyone else? Yeah, Commissioner Lyons.
I, I'd just like to say, you know, this is like a first step that allows for, for more opportunities in terms of grant funding. And, you know, I, I really appreciate this first step and it, and it, it requires unfortunately all these hoops for us to jump through in order to be eligible for grants. And in, in the short amount of time that I've been involved in public service in Livingston, I've seen a, what an entrepreneurial attitude in our, in our city about how to leverage public funds that would, that don't come from our tax base to, to support the infrastructure and the services and the built environment that we have here. If we were to just rely on that, on the tax base that we have, our built environment wouldn't be what it is today. So it, it requires this, this entrepreneurial attitude and this, this effort to go beyond just relying on our, on our taxpayers to to improve and to maintain our environment. And so this is just a great example of that and I really appreciate it. And it's something I, I support and just thank you very much.
That's great. Anybody else? All right. So we have a motion by Lyons and second by Kale. We'll call please. Motion passes. Thanks, Jen. Um, next on the agenda is another resolution five zero eight one, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana. Authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement granting an easement to the city through the property of Catherine and Todd Quizzle for the installation and maintenance of a water and sewer line. And I hope I pronounced your name right. Excellent. Mr. Gaiger.
Good evening, Chair Noots. The item before you is relatively simple. The, there is a, a gap in our city water and sewer construction in the Tana Lane area. And the, the Quizzles who are here tonight have been kind enough to offer the city an easement across their property so we can connect some of our water and sewer lines and provide better service. And in in, in response to that, the, the granting that easement, the Quizzles have merely asked that in the event certain development activities take place adjacent to their property, that the city construct a fence to help maintain and protect their property. And, and so we've, we've got the easements and then we have a separate memorandum of understanding that's before you for your consideration. And so I'll say if any questions you may have.
Mr. Gaiger, do you mind pointing up a map? So people that are online and just for the record, it's nice for people to be able to see where it is. And then you can point out what we're looking at on, on that. Thanks.
And so the area, any question? Is now in the, more or less the, the center of the screen. And if people can see my cursor moving up and down on Tana between Maple and Pine is the general area.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, do you have any clarifying questions?
I don't know if this is appropriate now or during a discussion. I'm wondering, and thank you to the Quizzles for offering this easement. I, we appreciate that. I'm wondering if the Quizzles may consider a more wildlife-friendly fence. If we have to put a fence up, that would maybe be four strands instead of five. If that's a possibility, I would be curious about that. I just, we've been asking everyone that we've been, all of our subdivisions that we've been evaluating about wildlife-friendly fencing. And I just wondered if we're going to put up a fence, if that would be an option for us, if that, to do a more wildlife-friendly fence. That would hold your cows in, certainly, but would be a little more wildlife-friendly.
Let's turn it to Mr. Gaiger. To see, because there might have been like conversations that already happened, so.
So just to be clear, the, the MOU as drafted calls for five rows of bark. So is the, is the request to remove a row and go just down to four? Or would it be to maintain the five and replace the bottom one perhaps with a non-bark?
So, so in general, and I, I sent you over a, some information from an organization that does wildlife fencing in the valley. It's been very has done it well. And, and in general, it would be a four-strand fence with the bottom strand being smooth. And then there's sort of a, a specific height at each strand. And that would make it wildlife-friendly and it will keep the cows in and safe. So that would, that's my only, that's why I'm asking.
So you're wondering, your question, just to clear, to make sure I'm fine, is can we change the MOU? Would they be open to changing the MOU to have this kind of wildlife-friendly fence?
You know, certainly I had heard of that. So I, while I hesitate to negotiate in public and, you know, you can put anyone on the spotlight.
And you know, you can put anyone on the spotlight. You know, I we could perhaps continue the conversation and see if there's any other clarifying questions and then.
Are there any other clarifying questions? From the commission? Commissioner Lyons.
If we were to move to approve the resolution, would that still allow for the. Flexibility for discussion that. Mr. Gauger is talking about.
So it's a process question. If we voted this through, would it be possible to go back and amend an MOU if they're open to?
I I I think we could structure the motion in a way that 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 allows approval of the resolution and then. Directs the city manager to continue conversations with the property owners to see if we can reach out a resolution that is amicable. Both the city and the property owner.
Okay, I might need you to keep up and direct the city manager to continue. Negotiation, negotiation, thank you. Anything else besides?
If you're comfortable with it.
Todd Quizzle, one-on-one, Tannan Lane. Actually, the existing fence that there is a five wire. And I mean, we got deer running through there all the time. So I I don't see what the. Deal with that. And the reason we have five, it's just extra protection. To keep cows from going in because the last thing we like is is cows getting in subdivision and and this land both. These part is all county land. It's not city land. So I just shouldn't go with five wire because that's what's there on existing. The one part is if you move. Move a fence because I told you some extra right away. And the other part is actually we used to have a fence there. Road is never built because the subdivision never happened. And was taken down because I actually purchased the property was going to be subdivision, so. I just didn't go with five because the last thing we like is cows going, getting out and and a five wire and I. Stays in there too, but we do a good fences is is a is a better deal. And and as far as deer, there's deer running all over that place. There's not a time when there's not twenty or thirty deer on our place. So I I I wouldn't worry about the wildlife, so. I think you might will just keep it the way it is.
Is there anything else you wanted to say?
No, you know, I I would say we we've heard from the property owner and so to the extent he would like to continue negotiations, I'm certainly happy to. Or if you'd like to, you know, even just condition that, you know, it is approved a certain way, you know, that's certainly your prerogative.
I'm I'm not going to hang up this to move this forward, but I would. I would like the city at this point to consider because we've been having these conversations over and over and over again, particularly with subdivision review. About wildlife friendly fencing. If we are going to offer to put up a fence. I think that we need to look at that and make sure that we're doing wildlife friendly fencing. I'm more I'm more concerned about the pronghorn than I am the deer, honestly, because those are the ones that tend to get hung up. And and like I said, I'm not going to hang this up on your deal tonight for sure, but I would just like. The city, because as a commission, several of us have been asking for that as a part of a subdivision review. That if we're going to provide fencing that we need to start looking at wildlife friendly fencing.
And we're to the, let's see, just to be clear, we don't have a motion yet, so this is clarifying. Wait. We get to the right page. So we're a clarifying question still.
We're just clarifying that, but the city is now building a fence, but that's would be provided. At least according to the MOU here constructed by a future developer at no cost of city, so we're not providing events. As far as I'm reading here, so it's clarification. I just want to point that out.
No, it's great. Thank you for clarifying that. You want to go again?
I would just say, thank you, Quentin. I appreciate that and you are correct. But I would say if we as a city are signing an MOU about a type of fence, I would hope that we would promote.
Any other clarifying questions? Alright, so I'm looking for a motion on resolution number five zero eight one. It sounds like. The commissioners want Mr. Gager to continue negotiation. You can add that to the motion. If you want to add a condition, you may add it to the motion. And I'll look to Mr. Gager to tell us if what somebody moves. Works for the city or not. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion on. Resolution five zero eight one.
Make motion prove resolution five zero eight one with Todd Catherine Quizzle. An authorized city, a chair and city manager sign the resolution. With no amendments to the MOU.
Motion by Schwartz and a second by Kale. Alright, no discussion. Is there anything? Oh wait, no, not discussion. Sorry, public comment. So in the room, anyone to give, anybody want to give public comment? No one online? Anybody want to give public comment on resolution five zero eight one? Not seeing anything. Public comment for resolution five zero eight one is closed. Now we get to talk about it. Discuss. Who wants to go first? No one?
So I'll just say, I think as a. What I heard from Vice Chair Kale is is kind of a direction to the city manager as general policy. That is something that the commission is interested in. And I would I would agree with the sentiment you shared that maybe this wouldn't be worth hanging up. The potential of the the big deal future infrastructure project, but it is it is. Regardless of how feasible it it will be for this particular case, that is something going forward. That's a priority of the commission. Do I do I reflect your sentiment? And and I and I share it. So I think that, you know, in that this is. This is an an important piece of a big puzzle. That we've made all kinds of other decisions related to. And so. I wouldn't be interested in in throwing out the work of that entire puzzle over this piece. But as a as a general policy direction. How however we can incorporate and promote and require facilitate wildlife. Friendly fencing. I think that's something that we can agree upon.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Wouldn't this be better served in an ordinance or something like that?
The conversation about fences.
Yeah, you know, instead of, you know, laboring the point here. That we look for in the future for an ordinance regarding that type of fencing within the city.
Great question. Mr. Gager, do you want to respond?
We can certainly include that in our upcoming reviews of all sorts of ordinances in twenty twenty-three. And then figure out the best path forward, but please know Commissioner Lyons and Commissioner Kale that your comments have been heard. And whatever we do moving forward, we'll ensure that that we're meeting that goal.
Other commissioners? I will, I will chime in about the wildlife friendly fencing. I think that it's a good part of the conversation, but I also want to say it depends. What the purpose of the fence is and where the fence is. So, you know, we heard at one of the subdivision. Conversations that the purpose of the fence might be to keep domestic pets that are very small in. Or separate. So in that, in cases like that. You know. Wildlife friendly fencing probably wouldn't do the job. I also appreciate knowing people that raise cattle that. Some breeds are different than others and you don't want. Them necessarily mixing because it's an expensive mistake and takes an entire generation to get it out of the gene pool, right? So I appreciate that it's a comp- a complicated issue and also that we should be considering wildlife friendly fencing and that. It's going to depend on the situation and why folks want to fence. So that's sort of my thought on that. Any other commission dis- discussion before we vote? Okay, so we have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Kale. Roll call please. And thank you, Quizzles, for your generosity and partnership with the city. We appreciate it. What I would actually, if you can save it till after the meeting because I have to move on since we voted, but. I would welcome you to converse with the city manager and then he can always send us messages too. So please, if you could.
Thank you.
If you're able to, I know process is wonky, but thank you. We appreciate your generosity with the city. Okay, so next up. I think that's all our resolutions, huh? And you believe it, we're already to action items. So action item A. Discuss approved deny consideration of support for Montana League of Cities and Towns issue campaign. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair News. The item before you votes is to determine whether or not you would like to support an initiative. That the Montana League of Cities and Towns is undertaking in response to a number of. Bills that have been proposed at the the state capital. To restrict cities ability to do certain things and. And so the Montana League of Cities and Towns basically is is looking at going, undertaking a a PR slash media campaign. To work to help legislate tours at the state level, understand the implications of. Of some of these bills that seek to preempt our powers, whether they're with respect to certain zoning changes. Or bringing up patient processes or regulation of short-term rentals. Or any number of of issues that are being accused based here in the city of Livingston. The 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 league, like I said, is is undertaking a campaign to help legislators understand kind of the implications of that. And and so the the league has engaged a media consultant for. A little over fifty thousand dollars and they're going around looking for municipal support for that. They're also pursuing some external grant funds that may help offset the costs. And regardless of of whether or not we participate financially to support the campaign. We will very likely benefit from the campaign if it's successful and and some of these preemption bills don't become law. And so there is there is some value to that. And so I wanted to to bring this for you for your consideration. And and direction on how to move forward.
Thank you. Clarifying questions? Commissioner Lyons?
So I think we have an acting city attorney on the call.
You can direct it to Mr. Gager.
Yes, we do.
So I'm just, I I I guess I'm just curious about the Mr. Gager. I'm curious about. The legal implications of us supporting such a campaign and whether. There is, you know. One, if there's precedent for this kind of action and then two. You know, what what the state constitution says about municipalities taking stance on state issues. From from the the material provided here, it seems pretty straightforward what. Montana League of Cities and Towns is advocating for. And I don't bring up the question out of an inversion. To that that policy stance necessarily, but just out of out of. Precaution related to what is a reasonable role for the city of Livingston and 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 through this. An endorsement kind of city commission as well.
No, I think it's, I think it's a very valid question and 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 I appreciate it and I certainly respect the intricacies of. The participation of public dollars in in issue campaigns and so. Jay, while your screen says that you're the interim city manager.
I noticed that. That was Faye. That was all Faye.
I I I don't take it personally nor as a sign for many of the five of you that things haven't been going as I thought they were, so. So this, Mr. Interim, is there anything you'd like to offer Commissioner Lyons in regards to his question?
That is a very good question, Commissioner Lyons. Nothing jumps out at me. From the state constitution or the state code that says this would not be legal. You know, or there would be any constitutional issues with it. However, I have not had a chance. This is the first I've heard of your concern. So. You know, I I can't say for a hundred percent certain, but I'm quite certain that there is no problem. You know, in acting in this manner with with the way this is set up. But, you know, there would need to be probably a little bit more research done to get a hundred percent on it. But just there, I don't see any problem with it at this point.
I I would offer some additional clarification to to Jay's comments. The the campaign is. More of an education campaign. There is no bill that's being presented. There is no vote that is being asked to be taken. It is more educating legislators on issues and some of the implications of restricting cities ability to act. And so I do think that we are in the clear on any prohibitions in state law on use of public funds to. Influence, you know, voter opinion on on issues on a ballot if that's the concern.
You still have a floor?
That's it for me as far as clarifying questions. So thank you to you and to Jay.
I just want to respond to you also real quick and say that a previous commission, we did take a stance on legislation and we voted on it. And so that's not, that's something that we've done before and that was actually like, you know, our a previous city manager going and lobbying. On behalf of something that the commission actually wanted to get passed at the state level so that we had the ability to do something at a local level. So we've done it in the past in a more official lobbying capacity without issue. If that's helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and then Commissioner Schwartz, you have a question?
And we as the city members of. We have we have an annual membership with them, so. Yeah, that's it for clarifying.
Vice Chair Kale.
And I would just follow up too. I know that Park County has done stuff, as the county have has done similar things. I think they've. Given money to make go to do things in the legislature to run campaigns like that.
Montana Association of Counties. It's like the League of Cities and Towns, but for towns.
And so I know that the county has done that as well, just for any. Seems a little more standard.
Well, yeah, we teamed up with the county on the last.
Anything else? Any other questions?
No, I think we got it.
Okay, so let's go to. A motion?
I make motion prove action item. A operate on the city manager to provide up to twenty-five hundred dollars in financial support. To the Montana League of Cities and Towns twenty twenty-three campaign against preemption. I'll second that.
Motion by Schwartz, second by Lyons. A public comment, please. Anybody in the room? Anybody online? Public co- comment for action item A is closed. Commission discussion. Commissioner Lyons.
You know, I think. That there's good reason why. Governmental authority is divided into different levels of geography. So we have our our city government and county government and state government. As I understand it, the the purpose for that is that. Citizens, voters have the ability to vote for candidates who are focused on those specific geographies and can make decisions. That are ver- better informed and are tailored to those those places. If we as a city. Abdicate our authority or abdicate the responsibility of making decisions to Helena. My opinion is that those decisions will be less well tailored, will have outcomes that are less well tailored. To our specific town and that's why we have those those different levels of government. So. In effort that, as I understand it, in effort to ensure that us as a commission or and that commissions around the state. Have the ability to tailor decisions to their specific constituencies. I think that that suits, I think that that is a good outcome for all of those constituencies of of varying. Varying political positions. So I I think that this is. This is something that would be probably just as well received in Big Timber as it would in Livingston, as it would in Bozeman. As it would in in towns throughout throughout our state. And as such, I'm I support. this support to the Montana League of Cities and Towns.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other commissioners, Mr. Schwartz?
Yeah, I just want to say I think we're quite capable of governing ourselves. It's what it comes down to and and that's it in a nutshell. I applaud the League of Cities and Towns for taking this effort and and keeping their ear to the ground and and something that could come up because I've I've heard about this in the past, something come this way to restrict our rights to to zoning and stuff like that, you know, it's a slippery slope, so I'm all in favor. Thank you.
Other commissioners?
I just say local control is really important. And so we need to be able to to maintain our local control in our community and in other and other communities and the ability to do the same thing. I know that there's a lot going on in the legislative session this year. It's happening that fast and furiously. And to be able to have the help of Montana League and Cities and Towns to help us keep our local control, I think it's really important. So thank you for bringing us to us, Mr. Gager. Anything you want to add?
No, I, one thing I just wondered about, when I first joined the commission, we used to go every year to a convention for cities and towns, and I found it very educational to have small towns, big towns, and be able to talk to people and go through a bunch of stuff. And I was very inspired. And that stopped.
Oh, we still do it. You just missed the invitation.
Yeah.
Well, we'll put it.
But it's a, but it's a, it's an important area, and I think, I think we're, I think we're getting close to the, take advantage.
You put a flag on that. You know, it's a little off-topic. We can, it's also on topic. Thanks. I'll add my day job. You know, I work at a policy organization. And I will tell you, every day I read new bill or bills working to change how we can effectively govern locally, particularly in the land use laws. So I think I'm especially concerned how our growth policy will be implemented if there's significant changes at the state level. So rumors are true. It's not good. Anything else? All right. We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Lyons. Roll call, please.
Chair News, for, I sure feel, for Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion passes. Next up, another action item. Action item B, discuss approved deny consideration of acceptance of land transfer from Park County. Mr. Gager?
Thank you, Chair News. The item for you is to contemplate the acceptance of two parcels of land that are currently owned by Park County and the the county and I have had some initial discussions on the property, the two parcels, excuse me. And based on those initial conversations that would involve a a transfer for no consideration, the county commissioners have actually reviewed the the possible transfer after December twentieth meeting and provided their direction to staff to work with city on managing the transfer. And so before the city staff works on receiving the land from the county, I simply wanted to have a discussion with the commission tonight and confirm that this is something that you folks are interested in. I have included a map that I will pull up for the the person home. But I've included a map as exhibit A on page seventy-three of the packets. But I will be bringing that up here on the screen shortly. And the two parcels are sit just outside of the Public Works facility at the corner of Bennett Street and Garnier Avenue. And so I would stand for any questions to you, ma'am.
And so for folks online, it's just the two sort of grayed-out parcels right by the, well, the two gray parcels by the text right there. Okay, thank you. Any clarifying questions from the commission? Commissioner Lyons?
Just kind of curious what the impetus was for the county to wanting to give give up the land and then kind of a follow-up question to that would be, are there other parcels like within the the city limits that the county is that the county owns that might be of interest in the future?
I'll start with the the second question first. I'm not aware of any other parcels that the county is looking to transfer over to city control within city limits. That said, I know that their their property ownership situation is fluid with respect to a number of parcels, so I would rule out in the future that there maybe other opportunities there. And as as far as the impetus, my conversations with the county Public Works Director, who was the person that initiated the conversation, were simply that the 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 county had acquired these lands over the years for different purposes that have not come to fruition or have already been utilized. And so I I think some of that was related to some roadways that were built many years ago before it was within the city. And so now these these parcels have just some, we've seen as access on the county side and the county thought that the city may have more utility with with those parcels given their proximity both to the Public Works facility and and then also the, you know, just other possible uses for some of these lands. That's it, I hope. Thank you.
Other commissioners? What are the drawbacks here? Looks like less than a grand is the cost. Anything else you can think of?
Well, because these are lands that would be under the city's care and control, we would have certain just maintenance and security requirements. But to be honest with you, as I've discussed with staff, those maintenance requirements seem like they will be rather minimal, though we will care for them. And from an insurance standpoint, typically municipal insurance policies like ours are written based on the number of employees and the number of, I was speaking about payroll because as, you know, a municipal insurance agent will tell you, people cause accidents, property doesn't cause accidents. And so that's really what the city's liability lies. And so we should not have any any increased insurance costs related to the ownership of these properties. So really, the 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 risk is relatively minimal. And and I think that they offered the city some options moving forward.
Great. How about a motion?
I will make a motion to direct the city manager to work with Park County Commissioners to affect the transfer of county-owned locations in the Montague subdivision and block three, lot eighteen through twenty-one, and block twenty-one, lot seven through twenty-one.
Second.
Second.
Lyons, beat you to it. So motion by Kiana, second by Lyons. Public comment? Anyone, anyone? No one in the room online? Do you want to stop your screen? Thank you for sharing your screen also. Thank you for that. Would you love a map?
Hey, that's what I mean for.
Maps and and more. I don't see any public comment. It's a quiet night for public comment. Public comment is closed on action item B. Commissioners, let's discuss. Who wants to go first?
I have no comments.
No comments?
Y'all are looking at me, so I'll.
You're a land expert, right?
You know, I think that having vacant land within the city that has the potential to be utilized with, you know, the direct consideration of the needs of the city is a somewhat unique opportunity. And I I I don't see much downside to this. I appreciate in the staff report, it it mentioned some potential uses. Those all sound great. Those all sound like things we need. And so this just facilitates, this just creates an ability for us to act on some things that are often left to the solely to the private market. So it seems like a great opportunity, so. Go for it.
Thanks, Commissioner Lyons. Anybody else?
I would just say I'm glad that this is giving us some opportunities. And so I'm excited about that. I think that that's really great. And you know, why wouldn't we say in general, say no to land that's contaminated, which I'm listening, it's not brownfield. So, yes, I would. It's exciting to have additional opportunities for things. So, thank you.
Anyone else? I will add that I do like the proximity of the city property in terms of maintenance. It's awfully convenient. It's right by Public Works. And what a generous, like, we're like on the receiving end of generosity tonight, huh? City of Livingston, between the Quizzles and Park County. This is not a bad agenda, huh? Really? Let's put this together for us. Anything else, folks?
Nope, you got it.
All right. So we're ready for, we have a motion by Kail, excuse me, and a second by Lyons.
Roll call, please, Chair News. Fourth, by Sir Kail, for Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion passes. Next up, let's take a break, huh?
Okay.
So how about a motion for, somebody want, I'll make a motion, huh? Make a motion for, what do you guys want, ten minutes? Is that good?
Yeah, show move.
So we got a motion for a break for ten minutes by Newt, second by Freeman. And for folks online and in person, I believe. Miss, can you put? Mrs. Kenneth?
And we're back.
Thank you. All right. So we'll pick up where we left off. Which is action item C. Discuss direction to staff on procurement policy development. Mr. Gager?
Thank you, Chair News. And the current item is one that I am bringing, seeking some policy direction from from the commissioners, and it is with regards to the city's procurement and contracting processes. And so as outlined briefly in the staff report on page eighty-one of the packet to those following at home, the Montana Code annotated provides some guidance to local governments as far as procurement and contracting are concerned. And but there, within the state of Montana, there are municipalities that have adopted certain guidelines that that provide more requirements than than are provided for in Montana Code annotated. And so I've included in attachment B on page eighty-four of the packet a summary of of procurement policies and and guidelines of of several several cities within the state. And really, to to frame the conversation, I would I would offer that there really are two considerations when when looking at procurement and contracting. And the first is the the method of procurement that is used. And and then the second are the the approval levels and and really who makes that final purchasing decision. And so going back to procurement method, when we look at Montana Code annotated, there really are very few requirements as far as procurement method. There are a number of allowed procurement methods. And the only real formal requirements are that professional services over fifty thousand are procured using a formal request for proposals process. And equipment and material purchases over eighty thousand are made using a formal invitation for bids process. And and also approved by the the governing board of the political subdivision. And in this case, that would be you folks. And so those really are the statutory requirements, which are are rather not burdensome. And and so, as I said, many cities adopt additional policies related to guide their operations. And and so that's what what we're working with here as a result of some external recommendations that we have received, and that you folks are aware of. And so my initial proposal, as I've gone through this, I've actually started my career in government as a public procurement official. So this is one that's near and dear to my heart. And so my my suggestion is that that you folks might consider really three levels. And and first level is for items below ten thousand dollars. And my recommendation based on experience, conversation with with our department heads and also an analysis of city operations is that the city considers purchases less than ten thousand dollars as informal purchases where we city staff would solicit a quote from the supplier and the the level of approval for that purchase would be with the department director. And then my my second proposal is that for purchases between ten thousand and fifty thousand, we also follow a bit of an informal process where we solicit quotes from three suppliers. And with with the city managers reviewing concurrence of that, the most responsible and lowest-priced vendor will be selected. And then somewhat aligning the the process with the one of the requirements in state code is my recommendation that items over fifty thousand be considered formal purchases where the city will undertake a formal procurement process using the invitation for bids, request for proposals, or request for quotes, processes that are enabled by state statute. And and for those types of purchases, we would come to the city commission for approval to proceed with the purchase and and sign the contract. And so you know, that is is my recommendation. That recommendation is based in parts in in state code, as I mentioned. And then also is informed by reviews of of what some of our peer cities are doing, although I will note that you know, many of our peer cities and and many cities in the state of Montana really do rely on that that eighty-thousand-dollar threshold for formal procurements and and governing body action. And so what I'm proposing is is a little bit more restrictive than state code and certainly a little bit more restrictive than than the number of our peers around the state are are operating under. But as I said, we've got external recommendations in in this arena. And so I'm I I drafted this this recommendation for your consideration. And based on the outcome of of our discussion here, I will work with the team to create a formal internal procedure document that will guide all of our purchasing actions moving forward. So I stand for any questions, ma'am?
Yeah, before we get into the commission conversation, I want to ask you a process question. So we're not voting on this. This is just a conversation, right?
That's correct.
And then when you come up with an internal policy, will you, will that come before us? Or will that not come before us?
That is very likely to come before you with a larger set of internal policy and procedure documents that I've been developing. Some based on observations, some based on external recommendations.
And so that'll be sometime in the next few months, several months, something like that.
Before the end of the fiscal year.
Which is, for folks that don't know.
June thirty.
Yeah. Somebody's phone this. Thank you. My next question, since we're not voting on this, it seems best practice to still open into public comment. Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Just want to make sure. It's okay with the commission. I'll just start with public comment. And then that way we can move into, and then when we move into our conversation, we'll take turns and get everybody a chance before we do round two. And just try to do it in some organized way. Five of us, does it sound good? Okay. So first, public comment on procurement policies. Is there anybody that wants to weigh in or give input in the room? We have staff. So I'm guessing that conversation already happened, you sent me. Folks online? I don't see anyone. Quiet, I have a public comment. So public comment for action item C. Quiet, I have a public comment. So public comment for action item C is closed. Now we can move it to the commission. Who wants to begin? Commissioner Schwartz?
I'll begin, just by saying thank you, Mr. Gager, for what you put into this now, knowing that it it is in your wheelhouse and your expertise. I don't want to belabor the point. Belabor too much with us going through it, but rather see the final product when it comes to us. But this is something that's been needed. There's been questions in the past about exactly where where our breaks are. I've never seen anything formal like this before. And I think it's a good start, and I look forward to the final product and and the sooner the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lyons?
I'll echo Commissioner Schwartz's comments. I appreciate you bringing your past experience to this. And in light of a comment I made maybe last meeting about kind of ensuring that our public meetings on Tuesday nights are within a reasonable timeframe for for maximum participation. In light of that, I'm curious about if if the threshold were higher, so we have our period, we have the eighty thousand dollars we're seeing in some peer cities. Do you have a sense of the number of contracts? How that would change the number of contracts coming before the commission? That I start with that because I've already made a comment to that effect previously. But I also am curious, you know, if I also saw twenty thousand dollars cut off on the bottom end from some from peer cities. What might be the, basically, what are the effects of changing those thresholds on capacity of city staff and the and the limited time of the commission?
Excellent question. And that really, you know, when we talk about procurement guidelines, that really is what we're trying to do. Was strike a balance between control and and workload, quite honestly, right? And so that that's where much of the conversation at the staff level was focused there. And I have gone back and and done any research, a little research exercise on on invoices and bills paid. And so I'm I'm confident that having ten thousand dollars of of department director discretion and up to fifty fifty thousand for city manager discretion is a manageable workload as far as, you know, keeping your folks' meetings manageable. I I will point out that I intend now that we have staff reports that really outline each action that is being taken, very likely purchasing decisions would end up on the consent calendar for you folks. Because in in many cases, they are relatively routine, you know, buying pickup truck. You know, it doesn't necessarily require a ton of discussion. And and so I, the the direct answer to your question is, I I think there will be less than or approximately twenty purchase decisions that end up with you folks during the course of the year. But a great many of those will end up on consent. And so I don't think it will increase your workload or extend the the time of the of the meetings. And then from a staff point standpoint, I I think that the workload there will be manageable as well. But again, it's it is my professional background, so I intend to support staff with a different process.
Great. So so I'm hearing from you that the, my question is something that was considered in the the allocation of these thresholds. I I should have expected that, given your background, but I appreciate you clarifying. And I yield. Thank you.
Other commissioners? Vice Chair Hill, you want to go next? Sure.
Um, I have a question about the ten thousand dollar threshold when it comes to department head. If we're actually really even in any of these thresholds, is there a point where something would trigger that, let's say, where a project comes up, someone's paying on that project, and they're kind of staying under that threshold? And then they make another payment on that threshold, under that threshold? Is there something that sort of triggers, like, oh, we're spending more than the threshold in two different payments, and it would push it up to the next level? Does that question make sense?
Absolutely does. And I would point you to note for on page eighty-three of the packet that provides that the provisions of the Montana Code annotated Title eighteen is followed in all procurement actions. And that really is fancy government speak to say that what you are proposing is covered because it is against Montana Code annotated, the structured transactions to get around dollar approval and authorization limits. And so, you know, I would say practically how that would work is, you know, the team will sit down at the beginning of any procurement action and really make our best guess estimate of of what the needs are from that action, whether it's, you know, buying pens or paper or trucks and and determine if we are likely to hit, you know, the ten thousand, fifty thousand threshold. And then we will proceed according to what that estimate is. And so no, we would not buy, you know, five thousand dollars worth of pens three times over to get around the one thousand dollar threshold. We will make that analysis at the initial point of purchase and then proceed in whatever direction is is right.
And if that, so and and so let's just I understand the pen thing makes a lot of sense. What if there's a project that comes up and we say, oh, it's only gonna be seven thousand dollars? And then we get three months down the road and we realize, oh, now it's gonna be another nine thousand dollars. And will will that trigger something for that? Then we would say like, oh, the city manager is gonna look at that now and we evaluate, or the city commissioner is gonna get that now and reevaluate.
Yes, because I I would view that as a change order to the original contract or an amendment to the original contract. And so, yes, that amendment took us up to a different approval level than we would act accordingly. And so, you know, the the team and I had a, what we earnestly thought was a, you know, forty-five thousand dollar job. But we got into some subs called a public works project. We got in some subsurface evaluation and then figured out there were some things buried there that we didn't expect. And that was when we had a twenty thousand dollar change order. Then, yes, I would be bringing the entire conversation up to you folks for review.
Thank you. Do you have anything you want to say, Commissioner? Or I'm sorry, were you done? Sorry. Okay, then I'll go. So what have we done? Or like, what do we do now before you got here? Or what have we done historically in Livingston? What has our process been as far as you can tell?
So in many cases, staff is abiding by the the three quotes kind of guideline that I've proposed here. And 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 for meaningful purchases are are out looking for the bids. And then everything, as best I can tell, purchases over eighty thousand for materials and and have come to you folks for consideration. So this the city has been complying state code. But but that is the process that we've been following.
Which has been more informal and not written down. Well, I'll address the things that are really on my mind. First of all, I want to thank you for bringing this to us. I feel like we've been talking around the edges of this. As long as I've been a commissioner, we've been talking around the edges of this, wanting it to come before us. So it's nice to see something come before us to discuss. You know, the concerns that I have, I don't know if they can be addressed in a procurement process. So the first one is really transparency. You know, I do get questions from constituents that want to know how much money has been spent on certain initiatives or projects, and I have been unable to obtain the information to answer those questions. And so that's an issue. It wouldn't come through in this policy, but maybe it will come through in some of your internal documents. How do we make spending more accessible and transparent to the public? So that, you know, it's very transparent when we do it at a public meeting, but executive executive work is a little bit different. And so how do we make the executive branch more transparent as well? That would be something that I would be interested in knowing some solutions around. The second thing is a concern that I'm also not sure can be addressed in here, which is it's come to my attention that public funds have gone to projects that were not directed by the commission. So that's a concern to me if we haven't addressed it in some form and public funds are being spent on initiatives that the commission has never supported or hasn't had the opportunity to support. Maybe that comes in some internal policy that you're working on, but that's a concern that I know has come up over my time. And, you know, there's several examples that I can think of in my mind that have happened over the course of the years. And then the last thing that can be addressed in this, I believe, is a local procurement process. So I think we have some initial procurement policy somewhere on the website, or I've seen it somewhere, but it's been a while. And I know the commission has talked about that with different purchases that we've made, like, how do we prioritize local vendors? And I think there's some, you know, mathematical way to do that within a certain percentage. I think that's what I've seen before, but I'm not recalling it. But maybe when you go through this, I would like to see some sort of local procurement added to this and maybe updated if it's due for an update. You know, so I think we have a lot of money that we spend as a city, and it's nice if we say that we support our local businesses. It's a really meaningful way to actively support local businesses is by keeping money in our community rather than sending it over the hill or sending it even further away and potentially out of state. I know that there's times when it makes sense to not do it locally for various reasons. And so accounting for that as well. But it would be great to see a local procurement policy with this, in my opinion. Just because it's come up before. And it seems like the other commissioners maybe, I mean, you often speak for yourselves, but I've heard other commissioners say mentioned as well. But that was kind of first round. That's what I have. Other commissioners, do you have anything that you want to add? That we all heard a little bit, or everybody said at least a chance to weigh in?
I'll just say, I'll, you know, with those points that you've made in mind, I'm curious, you know, I look forward to see what Grant comes up with and, you know, brings to the table and do. You know, there again, not trying to get into it too much into the weeds on this thing, but let our city manager do do his job here. And with the recommendations, you know, obviously, we want to support local by personal feeling, a local is always, if it's within 10%, I'm buying it here. I mean, it just makes no sense to go over a hill if I got, you know, a twenty, thirty dollars more here for it. Generally, it's not the rule, it's pretty, pretty competitive. And I'll, I I buy here. And it's always kind of been my personal policy for me. So I do support that and and look forward to seeing when the city manager comes up. But thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Schwartz. Does anybody else want a chance to go again?
I would just say I support the local to be able to, you know, optimize our local businesses first. Thank you for bringing that. That's really important. If that can be put into this policy, that makes a lot of sense. I do appreciate that. Thank you.
So I'm gonna kick it back over to you. Is there anything else you want to hear from us that would be useful, or do you feel like you have a sense of the five of us?
I do. I feel like I have a sense for the five of you. And and I absolutely hear you on on local purchasing. I know our staff certainly makes a priority to shop locally as much as we can. And and we understand the the power of of our government tax dollars, ability to generate economic activity in the local community. So we're we're always very conscious of that. And and I certainly hear you on on transparency and ensuring that funds are used for commission priorities and and projects. And and I can, I I can say that that given the scarcity of government resources, that is certainly one of my priorities, to make sure that our our funds are all used really to one, provide for the operations of the city, but two is to to pursue and and implement your policy priorities. And so I I'm hoping that meetings like this and as well some others will help ensure that that we have that that level of coordination. And then, you know, I I would just offer for anyone in the room or at this point, all of you folks at home, the that that may have concerns about transparency or use of funds to very, very good and accessible resources for everyone are the list of of bills paid list of of claims that we include in every packet. Every invoice that gets paid will appear on on that list of claims. And so it is a great way for the community to see every dollar that is spent. Granted, that that view comes after the dollars have been spent, but it still provides a measure of real-time transparency. And then for anyone that has any further questions, certainly feel free to contact me at citymanager@livingstonmontana.org. Or or feel free to to put in a public records request through through our website or any invoices or documents that that people may have questions about or or want to see. We're certainly happy to have those conversations with many members any day.
Thank you for that. I it it doesn't, it's not lost on me that sometimes it's not obvious in the claims. Well, I do appreciate that it's here. It's not always obvious what larger project a claim might be going to. So, you know, if it's a contractor, let's say, you know, it might just say the contractor's name, but we don't necessarily know what project that contractor is working for. So that sometimes can be an area where it wouldn't be obvious to the public what that contractor is working for, whether it's for one initiative or, you know, some other public works project or whatever it could be. So but I don't know, I don't know. I don't know the solution to that. But you you've heard it here, so maybe you have, you can think about it and.
I'll work on making sure and that we have good descriptions for each invoice moving forward. But but I I would also encourage any member of the public that has questions about how dollars are being spent to contact me directly. And if they don't feel comfortable with that, I think they can always do a public records request through the website that is available from the city manager's page. I believe in some of the menu items on the right. It should be the second or third item in the menu there. And so it's a good anonymous space to get information from the city.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have anything else you want to say, having heard Mr. Gager? Well, thank you. I'm excited. I know that these are conversations that the commission has really wanted to have for some time. And it's exciting that you're doing so much internal policy updates as you trans, as we all transition to your leadership. So thank you.
And just to be clear, sorry, not to interrupt you. Is is everyone kind of okay just a three head nod with with kind of what I've laid out here? Great. We'll we'll move forward and see you soon.
Thank you. Okay. How exciting, huh? We're really getting stuff done tonight. The next thing on the agenda is close executive session pursuant to MCA two dash three dash two zero three, part three, and MCA two dash three dash two oh three, part four A. So may I go ahead and make a motion? Is there anything you want to say first? All right. I'm gonna make a motion that we enter into close session to discuss personnel matters and litigation pursuant to Title II, Chapter Three, Section two zero three of the Montana Code annotated. A second. So motion by Newt and a second by Kale. And since this is executive, I don't need to open it to public comment, right? But I do want to say for folks online and anybody that should enter the room, that when close session is done, we'll come out of close session and we'll go back to a public forum or we'll wrap up our meeting with comments. Is there anything else? Go for it. Okay, so we have a motion by Newt and a second by Kale. Roll call please.
Chair News.
For.
By Sher Hill.
For.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Christian Lyons.
For.
Motion passes.
Need an extra hand?
Oh, thank you.
Good stuff.
It's more fun to just watch it here.
Got it.
Never show a blackboard.
I am. Do not see anything on the screen, so it's unclear.
You know, I have, sorry.
That's okay.
I unplugged this, but we are broadcasting. Everybody can see us. If you can't see us.
So just tell them you're ready. Oh, we're ready?
Yeah.
Look at that. Sort number eleven on our agenda. All right. Onto the city manager comment portion of the program. Mr. Gager.
All right. Thank you. As as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, next, next city commission meeting, audio. City Commission meeting ought to be a fun one with the growth policy kickoff. And uh looking forward to sharing with you folks the the plan there and hope that the community will uh join us. And um and uh and and very excited to to move this forward. I am also very pleased to um to point out that we have included the. Uh the calendar of events um specifically with regard to the the upcoming winter recreation opportunities in the city of Livingston. Hope that's that everyone in the community will take advantage of those opportunities, including this Friday night. There is a another roller skate night down at the civic center. And uh those will be the first and third Fridays um all the way through the end of March. So glad to see everyone out there roller skating, but if I don't see you there, uh it'll be because you are not there, because I will be there.
Are you noticing it? So the whole commission can go?
You know, I'm I'm happy to shoot me an email if uh if I get more than three of them, then then we'll have a quorum. And uh and and so I'm I'm excited for that. Hope to see everyone out there. And uh and then we've mentioned it before, but we will have some new communication um methods and and tools to to broadcast. And showcase all these fun events and others with the community. Um so stay tuned for that.
I like that you put this in the agenda, by the way. I mean, funner. Commissioner Lyons, you're up.
I can't think of anything right now. So uh good meeting and I yield.
Thanks. Mr. Schwartz.
Well, Grant brought it up first, but I was gonna. Big shout out to Maggie Carr and company for an awesome job she does. I mean, you know. P I R, P I R Day and stuff like that, which is, which is huge, working her and stuff like that. We are very, very lucky. Now let's give her a new facility somehow. In the future, very near future. Okay, I yield.
Thank you. Commissioner Friedman.
Wow, awful lot to think about. Tough period. I I think we're certainly headed in the right direction. The past stuff that still lingers. But I think as a group and as a new student, I think we're doing very good work. And uh. Yeah, there's some certain things that be on our control and it's a shame to watch it, but. Hopefully it'll uh answer itself and we'll just keep on going in the right direction. People are tough. Those are tough problems. I can't say we don't have at the national level. Well, I just uh I think we're off to a good start. Very good.
Thanks. Thank you.
Um I just want to say it's really great to be back here in person. It feels amazing to be in the same room with all of you, working together like this. Um so thank you, Mr. Gager, for getting us back into this space. It just feels like we're working as a commission together. Not that we weren't before, but let's go better. So um thank you. Thank you for that. And um looks like so many fun things now. Are we gonna get on roller skates? Show skating? But so, yes, thank you for uh Maggie and all the programs she's putting on. I know a lot of people appreciate those. It's exciting. Lots of good things to look forward to coming up. I'm really excited about implementation of the growth policy. Um other things coming down the pike. Um so thank you, Mr. Gator, for putting us on on the road, uh to moving things forward.
Thanks. I uh just want to thank all of you commissioners. I think these conversations and the comments have been so wonderful and balanced. Um I really, and I really mean that. I think it's, I think it's great, the the different ways that we view these topics. And the different things that people are saying. It's really, it's helpful and it's meaningful and it's, it feels like a good depth of conversation. Yeah.
So one thing that we're just having come to a conclusion is how to get the people up together in North Hill.
Yeah, so while we can't discuss that.
How do we handle this without taking somebody off? So.
I, well, we can't discuss that this evening. I expect it will be on our agenda within the next year for sure. That we'll at least be having some conversations or if not on agenda, a work session or some creative space that Mr. Gators uh offering. To us and our.
I just haven't heard that. Oh, that makes sense. You know, I just. Been working on it for years.
Well, in all fairness, Mr. Gator's only been here a couple of months, so we'll give him a minute to get to it. I think he's already been thinking about it. So hopefully he'll offer some new ideas. But I really, I mean it in a meaningful way. I really appreciate the four of you very much. And um it makes it so much easier to run a meeting um when we're in person and the conversation so balanced. And I just really appreciate the level of respect. I know other commissions across the state disagree in a um less tactful way. And I really appreciate that we can, you know, come in the room together as colleagues and leave as colleagues and always keep it professional. So thank you deeply, each one of you. If we couldn't, we wouldn't have this space without each of our contributions being like that. So thanks. I don't have anything else to add. Thank you. Motion, who wants to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Check it.
So motion by Friedman and a second by Schwartz. All in favor, say aye. Pose, say aye, five oh. I just have it. We're being adjourned at eight fifteen PM. Good job, folks.